Also, please call the roll.
Alderman Palmer?
Here.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor Schonheit?
Here.
Alderman Novick?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Palmer?
Here.
I'm so, I'm so sorry. Alderman Pandlelyon?
Alderman here.
Here.
Alderman?
Here.
Alderman Rosenberg?
Here.
Alderman Aylman?
Here.
Here.
Here. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our January 6th committee meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item is the concealed carry status update by Carl Waldorf, our deputy chief of police.
Okay, I just have a quick update on concealed carry, specifically the police department and city's responsibilities under it. As a refresher, the website began accepting applications the first week of January. We expect the first permits to come out in March and April. We also use the same website. There does not seem to have been any negative problems with the website capacity-wise, so it's running perfectly fine. We also use the same website for part of our responsibility under the act, which is reviewing the individual permit applications. So, as part of the city's responsibility under the act, we're going to be signing all of the city-owned buildings, so Building Maintenance has come up with a schedule for doing that, and those will be going up in the next couple of weeks. The upper right is the copy of the signage, which is four by six inches. I think you've all seen that before. And this is an example of where it would be going here, both entrances to the building. The final part of our responsibility under the act lies in reviewing all of the applications. This is an article from the Sun-Times last week, which, at least of last week, pegs the number of applications at the state level at somewhere around 33,000. To date, we've had 45 applications that we've reviewed. Thirty-five of those are current residents, 10 are former residents. And just to let you know what our process is, we run all of the background contacts with all 45 of those folks, and then we go over each report one by one. The state statute specifies that if we have an objection, we have to articulate a reasonable suspicion why this permit applicant would pose a danger to themselves or others. To date, we've had no problem with any of the 45 applicants, and that's all we've seen so far. So, we'll be doing that on a continual basis.
Are the names of the people with concealed carry permits made public in any way?
No, the names, the permits themselves, and the permits once issued are actually free from FOIA under the act.
So truly is concealed.
I have a question. On the... Do people that go through the concealed carry permit, would they feel exempt from the no firearm sign because they have a concealed carry permit?
No.
Are they instructed during the permitting process that that means that speaking to them?
Right, that's a required part of the curriculum, of the 16-hour curriculum, and it's up to the individual instructor when they certify that permitty to have covered that material. Now, obviously, we can't guarantee on our end that they have been instructed on that particular part of it, but that's one of the bigger parts of the statute, so I think the vast majority of classes will cover it.
What are the penalties for carrying a concealed weapon into a no concealed carry place?
The first offense is a Class B misdemeanor. Subsequent offenses are Class A misdemeanors and can result in a revocation of the license.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is an affordable healthcare update by Dasha Kalmar, our director of human resources.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. We're here tonight just as a follow-up from our December meeting when there seemed to be some questions. We wanted to give you an update on where we were with our health insurance and where we are going forward. First, very quickly, the city has been self-insured since July of 1999. We started with no reserves at that point in time. And then in 2003, we began working with Peter Wright, who's going to be here with me tonight, and we also created at the same time an employee benefit committee. This approach, by using the employee benefit committee, has created a highly educated workforce, which has, we believe, contributed to the fact that we are a very healthy plan at this point. We've also had a strategy of always having premium increases, even if they're very modest, and that's enabled us to go from basically zero reserves in 1999 to over $5 million in reserves, which covers our unfunded retiree liability. That's also called OPEB, but it's something that's required by GASB and I don't know if it's statutory or not. But we have this very comfortable reserve position, which allows the city and the PCA Committee to evaluate what our stop-loss reinsurance option should be. In other words, what is our deductible for our stop-loss? And we've been able to raise that over the years and assume more risk, but we balance it because of the amount of reserves that we have. I'm now going to introduce Peter Wright, who is our benefits consultant, to talk about what our reserves are and what we've looked at with the Affordable Care Act, where we're going into the future.
Thank you, Dache. Mr. Chairman, committee, thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. As Dache said, we'd like to talk a little bit more about the financial history of the plan. So, what we'd like to call your attention to is the status of the reserves for the city's self-funded plan. The self-funded plan means that we basically have to pay all of our claims ourselves out of our own bank account. And when you do that, you also have a liability for if someone goes to the hospital today, the claims will be paid in the future. So we have an outstanding incurred liability for any claims that have not been processed yet. This chart shows you the self-insurance fund reserves, which are currently at a very high level, and they actually exceed the liabilities for all incurred claims, as well as our maximum claim exposure for the plan itself under the stop-loss arrangement. So, for example, if the plan expected costs are approximately $5 million, the city's reinsurance obligation may be $6 million, meaning that reinsurance kicks in at 125% of expected paid claim levels. And as this chart highlights, and as I commented, our total reserves exceed not only our maximum liabilities of the healthcare plan, but on top of that, they also have enough money to pay for incurred claims that the city's health plan is liable for, as well as, as Dache pointed out, the city over the last several years has been able to set aside a portion of this reserve and formally designate it as what's called an OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Obligation Reserves. So in other words, the reserves are in a very high level, are at a very high level right now. This next chart gives you another snapshot of that, and this chart actually compares the reserve position of the plan to the total expected cost of the plan over time. So, as you can see is with this chart, if you look at 2014, the city medical and dental plans are expected to cost approximately $4.9 million over the course of 2014. And this chart actually compares our total projected cost, which is the blue line, with a few of the numbers are highlighted, to the actual reserve position at the end, projected for the end of 2013, which would be a little over $6 million. We also project this out through the process of planning for the city over the next several years, so the chart that you see on the projected is one of the financial tools that the city management uses to help gauge where is the plan going. So we anticipate that this reserve position will continue to be very healthy, and as I said previously, it is in excess of the actual incurred liabilities of the plan, as well as our maximum exposure. So, we wanted to give you a few points on our actual initiatives with regard to managing the cost of the plan, the design of the plan, as well as making changes over time in response to the marketplace. The passage of the Affordable Care Act actually changed the regulatory environment of our healthcare plans dramatically. But as a self-funded plan, the city actually has great flexibility in terms of plan design, and one other key advantage is that the status of taxation of healthcare plans, it's much lower in the self-funded environment than it is for health insurance plans. So the approach has been to carefully consider options on a regular basis. Dache and I meet regularly with Bob, as well as with Elizabeth, and then with the PCA Committee, and the approach has been to evaluate options, to critically evaluate them, and decide what might be the best course of action for the city while utilizing the committee process to begin to introduce change. This has been a very powerful tool. The Employee Benefit Committee most recently met from February 2013 through August to decide what the city might want to do in response to healthcare reform, particularly with the adoption of the new Affordable Care Act compliant healthcare plan designs. The recommendations that came out of that group, which met probably six formal meetings plus countless meetings with their own work groups, the formal recommendations included retaining our grandfathered status, which meant that we could retain the bulk of the plan's design without adopting certain changes that the law required, and also making changes to our lower-cost plan, called the Choice HRA Plan, and somewhat more limited changes to the traditional plan. The committee also recommended the adoption of a low-cost, high-deductible plan with a health savings account, partly in response to meeting the need for a lower-cost plan for retirees, but also, more importantly, to provide for a lower-cost option that the city would need to provide to seasonal staff, who as of 2015, as part-time employees, will be required to be offered coverage. The committee process has been very instrumental in both maintaining positive employee relationships, or relations rather, and the understanding of the plans, and I personally feel it's been a very strong tool in helping to maintain a very low level of cost growth compared to the rest of the industry. Going forward, though, we realize that we can't stop now. This slide shows you one of the examples of the healthcare laws, rules that will come into play potentially in the future. In 2018, high-cost healthcare plans will be subject to a tax. Management and the committee are fully aware that this tax is not something that the city or participants would want to pay, and that we will need to make continual changes to our plan and manage our plan costs through a continuing process involving the benefit committee as well as city management. One example of future plan designs is this high-cost health plan tax. While we don't know what the regulations are, they've not been released yet, this slide gives you an example of what we believe would have to be our cost-growth goal in order not to exceed the tax, or excuse me, the tax threshold. Currently, that threshold is approximately $30,000 annually for a family. Again, we're estimating that our health plan costs would have to exceed somewhere, would have to grow less than 5.5% per year. Fortunately, we've been below that before we probably would be subject to that tax, and more likely than not, it would be the traditional plan, our most expensive plan, that would be subject to any changes. So, we're looking forward to work in this area. Again, this is several years out. It's not certain that this will come to pass, but it is in the laws as it stands today. We wanted to also provide you some background of some of the major factors driving our health plan costs, and the primary reason frankly is related to the cost of care as well as utilization, but it's important for all of us to realize that municipal employers also provide statutorily required retiree coverage. What this means is the city has to extend coverage to people who leave the workforce, and those individuals are free to choose the city's plan and pay the full premium. However, offering retiree coverage is not the only problem that we face in the municipal sector. We also are subject to collective bargaining constraints, which result in plan costs, together with retiree coverage, result in plan costs that appear to be far more expensive than private sector plans. And that is true. Municipal plans in the northern Illinois area, frankly around the country, tend to be more expensive. A primary driver of that is the fact that we offer retiree coverage. Retiree coverage is something that is not offered, often seen in private sector plans, and Lake Forest's actual cost history, even in light of offering retiree coverage, has actually been quite favorable, even with the context of medical inflation, aging, and that sort of thing. We do anticipate, along with management, that strategies to lower overall costs will have to continue. Dache and I are constantly talking about taking on a new strategy or getting the benefit committee together, working with Bob and Elizabeth, and we obviously welcome council input as well. However, fortunately, we have seen a developing trend, that healthcare trend rates, in other words, the inflation rates have been coming down in the recent past, and we hope that they'll continue. We wanted to provide you a snapshot of historical and projected cost-growth rates compared to industry average. I know this slide is a little busy, but the green bar on the top is actually the healthcare trend rates for the industry. Right now, it's approximately 8.5%, and it's anticipated to continue at that level, and then you'll see two other lines below that. The blue line is the, is the actual cost-growth rate for the city. As you can see, it jumps around. In other words, one year it may be very low, and then it jumps up a little bit, and then it drops down. But interestingly, the overall trend is well below the industry trend, and it's remained that way with the exception of, I believe, 2012, or 2011, when it, when it went up a little bit more than the overall healthcare inflation rates. The bottom line, though, is the actual premium change that the city adopts. That line has consistently been below our healthcare trend rate. As I mentioned previously, the five-year average growth rate is approximately 3.2%. In this most recent year, we had approximately a 3.1% premium increase. That is also net of enrollment changes. So, historically, we've stayed very much below overall industry trend rates, which is a very good sign, and frankly, it's one of the reasons why self-funding can work very favorably. So with that, we want to really close up by reemphasizing that the city has an extremely sound reserve position, and I think together with Dache's efforts and Bob's efforts and Elizabeth's input, we've taken a very proactive approach, particularly through the benefit committee, and we really, we do have a plan going forward. This year was a great example of working with the benefit committee to make changes, to really evaluate aggressive changes, not-so-aggressive changes, and then, most importantly, send it out to work groups for survey feedback and that sort of thing. So, that is where we wanted to end our presentation and see if the council has any questions.
What is the industry that is referred to in the industry cost trend?
Great question. The industry means the entire medical insurance industry. So, it's called a trend rate, that's industry acronym for average premium increase prior to any plan changes.
So, that's private and public?
Yes.
Okay. How is a premium determined on a self-funded plan for retirees?
It's, the simple math is, you take the total amount of expected cost and divide it by the participants, and that...
Reconciled with the we won or we lost? I mean, do we find out if we've done it well or done it poorly?
Yes, actually, the reserve chart that you show is the end result of a very detailed spreadsheet that talks about premium increase, premium income, as well as expected cost. And the reason the reserves have grown is because the city has basically ended up with more premium at the end of the year, together with city contributions and employee contributions, enough that that remains in the health insurance fund. So practically speaking, the city actually contributes money to the health insurance fund from the budget. The employee contributions go into the health insurance fund, and so the money that's contributed to the healthcare plan stays in the healthcare plan. The city's...
I'm just asking about retirees. That part, the other part makes sense. So, we don't have an income from a retiree.
Yeah, actually...
Until we tell them how much they need to...
The bylaw, retirees have to pay the exact same price as actives pay.
Okay.
But you don't get the employee, or the employer contribution?
Right, they do pay the full premium, if you will. They don't have an employer contribution.
How many plans do we offer, and generally, what are the differences between them, among them?
There are two main plans. In addition, we introduced a new high-deductible plan. So the plans are actually somewhat similar in that they both, both are unlimited coverage, but the traditional plan, the more expensive plan, has approximately a $350 deductible, and all plans have the same doctor copay, it's about $25. The out-of-pocket exposure on the traditional plan is approximately $1,000. The out-of-pocket on the other plan, which is less expensive, is a little bit higher than that, but not materially. The big difference is our Choice HRA Plan has a relatively high deductible, but the city offers what's called a health reimbursement account to pay a portion of that deductible, and if an employee uses the health reimbursement account, that's fine. That's what it's there for. If the employee does not use the health reimbursement account, the balance stays in there, and the employee can actually build a balance, and retirees are eligible for this as well. The idea is that the employee has an incentive to try to be wise in terms of how the employee utilizes care for their family or for their individuals. So, the two differences, the traditional plan is the traditional design that many older folks may be accustomed to. The Choice HRA Plan is a higher deductible plan with a spending account feature to get that consumerism mentality at play. The new plan, the high-deductible plan, has a very high deductible, it's approximately $4,000, $4,500, and that allows an individual to take what's called a health savings account if they choose to contribute to that. The reason this plan was offered is it's far less expensive, it's almost half the cost of the traditional plan.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Retirement coverage, I presume it ends at age 65 when you convert to Medicare? No?
Not exactly. The city is under the obligation to extend the current healthcare coverage that actives have to retirees. So, the standard, normal, non-Medicare coverage goes through age 65. At that point, an individual can still stay on the city's plan. At that point, the city's plan pays secondary to Medicare. So the cost for retirees over age 65 is quite low. They also pay a much lower premium. All right, but the city's obligation for retiree coverage does not end at age 65, it continues until the retiree drops off the plan.
So it's like a Medigap plan?
Yes.
It does become a supplement. However, the reason this was done originally is a number of years ago, our police and fire sworn personnel did not pay into Medicare. They do now, but we, I don't know that we have many anymore, but we may have a few who never got their Medicare credits, so they didn't have Medicare as an option. I'm not sure we have anybody that's in that situation any longer, but that's part of the reason it was initially done.
And then what's the average retirement age? How many years span are we covering for retirees as opposed to actives, on average?
Well, they can retire, police and fire can retire at age 50. IMRF employees, all the other employees can retire at age 60 for the tier one, but you can retire at 55 with some penalties on your pension.
Any other questions?
On the reserves, and I'm not trying to tell a state of Illinois joke or anything, but the surplus that's available, if that, if that number became 8 million in surplus or something like that, because it looks like it's growing, and if the costs don't go up, and again, I'm not trying to be funny, but is that, is that money secure, or is it available for other uses in the, I feel like I'm in Springfield, but can you, is that money available for the city to use for other purposes, or how does that, if it gets too big, how would it get adjusted down?
Well, I think perhaps Elizabeth may be the best person to speak on the actual structure of that account.
$3 million there, and we're...
But in general, the reserve is not set up as what you might call a VIBA trust, which would be a dedicated asset that is technically possessed by the population it covers, in other words, the employees. So, yes, I believe the city still has control of those funds, but to the extent that we would anticipate that it grows to $8 million, that's at a time where I would say, hey, the reserves are getting very high, you don't need a rate increase to fund the reserves. The rates are not set with the intent of funding the reserves, they're set cognizant of our expected cost, and then a small margin in case, you know, we suddenly get a rash of large claims. So technically, I believe those reserves are basically a dedicated fund for the city, but they're not necessarily segregated into a trust account that, you know, is totally not available.
Because to compare it to GAAP accounting, which I know we're different completely, but what, what we would do, and it's leading to a question in a situation like this, is we would look at our, our costs and our reserve, and we would make an adjustment at the end of the year to recalculate next year's reserves based on more history and less guessing, which, which would probably mean in a year where reserves grew dramatically like they have, there would be an adjustment to that reserve, and that money would then, if a million dollars is our reserve for 100 employees, then if we had 1.5 million, we would release part of that reserve to the general fund of our company. And I don't know if, if there's any, if there, I don't, are you following me? I don't...
Yeah.
Okay. Does any of that happen, or is this always kept aside?
We do, we use a different mechanism, but we do a similar thing. What we have done is this, the activity of the insurance fund is funded each year by operating transfers from the operating department budgets. So what we do is we fully fund the transfer budgeted-wise each year, but in order to keep the reserves from getting too high, we can scale back that transfer and not transfer the whole amount budgeted, and so we can control the reserve levels that way, and so we keep the budget amounts in place so that we don't have an impact in any budget year where that budget amount has to grow too high, which puts an operating impact on the operating budgets, because the amounts are budgeted, but we don't have to transfer the full amount budgeted and therefore, you know, grow the reserves unnecessarily.
Are the numbers we saw net of those transfers, or net of anticipation of transfers?
I'm sorry?
Are the numbers that we saw net of the anticipation of transfers, or net of the transfers?
Those are reflecting the actual transfers, right.
So you could make that lower as an internal policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you both. Next is a winter storm update parentheses "time permitting" by Michael Thomas, our director of public works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the committee, the whole. To add a little levity to the topic, I entitled the PowerPoint "State of the City: Snow and To begin with, this week, after the snowstorm this weekend, which amounted to about four inches of snow, we're going to be continuing with our plowing of the sidewalks. We'll be bench plowing. There's a picture of what bench plowing actually is. We're doing that on Green Bay Road today, and we'll be working throughout the city this week. We'll continue to haul snow uptown, the CBD, the parking lots, the cul-de-sacs, actually, our garbage trucks are beginning to have difficulty getting around the cul-de-sacs. We've got 45 of them on the east side of town, I believe 73 or 74 on the west side, so we need to get into those cul-de-sacs and start hauling snow. We'll continue to scrape the roads when the temperatures rise. The short and long-term forecast, two to four inches tomorrow evening into Wednesday, with another possible two inches coming this weekend. The long-term forecast, everything that we have access to, the various weather services and models, show that the weather is going to continue like this, at least for the next two weeks. We do, they'll see typically mid-February as the sun begins to get higher in the sky. Usually, we end up pulling the plug at West Park Ice Rink by mid-February, so the sun will help us as days go on. But our biggest concern long-term is going to be the freezing rain, the black ice that we typically see in March. The snowstorms that we'll receive in February are relatively easy to handle. What keeps me up at night is having salt for March. Budget, our annual chemical budget is $222,000. We spend that primarily on bulk salt, bulk road salt, calcium chloride, and then salt for the parking deck. If in fact, city council this evening or in the future approves additional purchases for road salt, that would come out of the general fund reserve account. To date, our budget for overtime is $139,616. We have spent that, in addition, through Saturday evening slash Sunday morning, we have spent an additional $64,989. So, like all towns municipalities, we are spelling, spending a relatively good amount, not only on personnel, but the salt as well. Some general salt statistics. Today, we have two salt bays at MS. Our estimate is we have approximately 600 tons remaining. We did receive a delivery late in the week, but it was two semis, so it wasn't anything of significance, but 600 tons remaining. We typically use 110 to 120 tons per event. This past weekend, we cut everything back significantly. All the drivers were told not to salt anything until after the storm, so we used just over 50 tons for the entire event. The state, we have ordered all of our salt, 1,200 tons through the state. We had a good amount, I believe 2,600 coming into the winter, or 2,400. We've ordered and received the 1,200 from the state. We've ordered and received the 1,200 from the state. The state contract allows us to buy an additional 20%, which we have ordered. We ordered back on January 14th, back then, we were told 10 business days, and now, we're being told, hopefully in a couple days, we'll begin to see trucks coming in. So, the supply is very low, Morton Supplies up in Milwaukee, and once the order is released, as I said, we'll begin to receive some of these trucks with this additional 240 ton. 600, 240 gets you up to 840, we'll remember that number. This is a, apologize for all the, the data on there, but this gives you a, a good history of the amount of salt we purchased over the years, as well as the price we paid. I highlight the 2007, 2008 winter, where we had to, we ran into the similar situation of trying to find salt. There was a council meeting back in February of 2008, where Superintendent Ken Leone asked for 400 tons, and a couple days later, we found some additional salt out in Delaware, and it was trucked in from Delaware. So, you can see the prices, and again, the, the tonnage. The current salt availability, Morton is a company that we work with through a state bid, they do not have any additional salt available, neither does Central, Conserve, Gunther. Hutchinson Salt was a potential lead last week, but we've been calling them daily, and they're not answering their phones. Midwest Salt told us there is a good amount of salt readily available out in Ogden, Utah, that we could pick up for $54 a ton. To have it delivered, it's 225, one way is 1,400 miles. The other place we found it was down in Shreveport, Louisiana, they are, again, $87 a ton picked up, or $210 a ton delivered. Over the weekend, we found another spot in northern Texas that has salt, and a company, Holicky Brothers up in Minnesota, would provide the trucking, they're at $185 a ton delivered. For comparison purposes, state bid, we're paying $52.33, so it truly is a supply-demand issue. To give you some ideas as far as what we typically see in February and March, here's a, a history, last year, February, if you remember, December and January were very light, February and March were actually relatively heavy. And again, this simply tells you the number of events where we were plowing and dropping salt, as well as the tonnage that we typically use. So, if we were to average them out, we would say, we typically see nine events in February, four in March. However, this winter, as we all know, has been a heavy winter, so the chance is that those, there will be more numerous than that. Boiling all this down, again, the 600 tons we have in stock, the 240 that we are being told we're going to receive, we'll keep our fingers crossed, we're going to continue to conserve the salt, meaning we will only salt the mains, meaning Green Bay Road, Telegraph, Old Elm, Everett, McKinley, Western. We will salt those mains after the snowstorm has stopped, we will then do the parking lots, and we will do hills, curves, and intersections in the neighborhoods, but again, this is all post-storm. So, if the storm goes on for 18-plus hours, it's going to be a long event, but we're not going to put any salt down. That's how we were able to pull back this weekend and basically cut our usage in half. The comfort level of having 600 plus possibly another 240, but we, again, when we look at our history in February and March, our comfort level is more towards having 1,300 tons, and to get there, we would need to purchase an additional 500 tons. So, our recommendation is to pursue waiving the bid process and purchasing 500 tons from Holicky Brothers. The challenge with that, of course, in this current market, is that all the material must be prepaid, which I, I completely understand is a challenge and there's a risk. We have tried to do our due diligence today, we had the police department do some investigation into the company, and did a background check on them. I contacted them, received a, a list of references, which we called and checked, they were all very favorable, said they were a very honest company, they paid their bills within a week, and they were very good to work with. We also would continue searching for availability. In your city council agenda this evening, we're asking for a recommendation, and this, again, the recommendation was written before we found this, but to continue to work to find additional salt with favorable pricing, and if we find something, we would want to run that by both the Public Works and the Finance Committee Chairman to get their approval. As I spoke to the, the owner today of Holicky Brothers, as he said, he has 200-plus people that have asked him recently for salt, and he said, if you don't buy it, that's fine, he's just going to move to the, the next, next buyer. So, it's, it's a commodity that is in high demand, very difficult to find, it's expensive, and, and from our standpoint, we recognize and obviously appreciate the fact that it is expensive, it's a lot of money to spend, but we also obviously have concern about the safety of the roads for the next six-plus weeks. So, we've provided you then, this evening, a lot of information, and we'd like to hear your thoughts on the topic, or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did we plan ahead sufficiently for this?
We did. From our standpoint, that we went ahead and stocked and anticipated to stock 3,600 tons. 3,600 tons a year is high, we're typically around 32, and again, that's with us going at 110 to 120 tons per storm. So, in our opinion, ordering that extra amount was enough, especially when we looked at our past history. The one challenge with the state bidding process, although it's very good, and we, we buy salt at a favorable dollar amount, is that they only allow you each year to buy 20% above what you had purchased the previous year. So, luckily, we had stocked the cupboards per se over the, the summer months, and then we purchased the 1,200 this year.
Now, we could also, even though we've got our max under the state contract, we could go out before it snowed and try to get more salt if we wanted, couldn't we?
We could have, yes. I would say it was three or four years ago, we were working with a consortium, it was ourselves, Highland Park, two or three other communities, and in the end, the bidding cost per ton came in higher than what the state bid cost was. So, there really is obviously savings in purchasing volume. One of the things we're going to be working with and looking at is working with the county. The county is, two weeks ago, pulled together a bunch of municipalities to talk about going in together and bidding, and we're going to look at possibly participating with that. Again, recognizing that unless the state changes the rules, we can only order 1,400 tons next year, and we've got to get to that 3,600-ton level, my opinion, for comfort of having it throughout the winter.
Should, should we think about getting to a higher level than that even?
Possibly, if we had the storage. And the one fault, I guess, that I, that I would recognize is, yes, we didn't take advantage of old MS, we could store 600 tons there. New municipal services, we can store 1,600, and we were full going into the winter, and as soon as one of the two bays would, would be empty or nearing, we would call in for another 800. If we could store more, this is purely a game of ownership, is nine-tenths of the game. If we could have 4,000 on hand going into the winter, that would be wonderful. But to do that, I think we're going to, we would need to look at doing some modifications to that salt bay, the two salt bays at MS. Structurally, I don't think it will hold that capacity that, that we'd like to see.
So, actually, if we had excess, we could turn around and sell it to the municipalities?
We absolutely could. We, we do, we do sell it to District 67 and 115, and we store it and charge a fee to Matawa. They, neither, neither group uses that much, but yes, this, I want to say, was about four weeks ago, Highland Park completely ran out of salt, and we lent them 200 tons, and within about a week, week and a half, their deliveries came in, and we received the 200 ton back. So, we're trying to cooperate with one another, but it also is, is turning into a situation where there's towns like Park Ridge, Deerfield, that are having a hard time finding any salt whatsoever, and have run out completely. So, we're trying to do our best to conserve what we're using from this point forward, and possibly purchase additional salt.
If we can resalt at $185 a ton, we could probably meet our capital improvement budget.
You are correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question. Michael, I heard Lake Bluff has actually gone to mixing their salt with sand, is that a viable option?
My personal opinion, the answer is no. Sand holds moisture, we tried it about 12 years ago, it really did mess up a lot of our augers. It also, as everybody knows, it will get into the sewers, it's dirty. I don't, I don't think it's beneficial. I, I, I think what we did this past weekend and the weekend prior, we really cut back on the salt usage. We're going to ask residents to be patient for the remainder part of the winter, the, the side streets could be packed, but as that sun gets higher in the sky, we're going to come out and plow again. There may be no snowstorms whatsoever, but you might find some salt at the bottom of your driveway. If the streets heat up, we'll come back and scrape them. But I, I don't, I don't think it is a good idea for us to go with sand. Some towns have, I, I don't think it's a good bet for us.
Without materially jeopardizing the safety of the streets, do we need to maybe revisit our protocol for spreading salt to begin with, and maybe do it more conservatively, prioritize where it's needed the most, namely intersections, so cars don't go skidding through the intersections? But why can't the side streets simply be plowed and not salted, especially when we have single-digit temperatures, where the salt probably isn't as effective as it is in the 20s and teens?
Back in 2007, 2008, when we were having this, excuse me, salt shortage, very similar to what we are now, what you began to see was what we called "snowpack" on the streets, and it literally felt like you were driving over a significant amount of potholes. That, that is what will build up over time if we can't get the snow off the street. So, what we're trying now is to, this conservation practice of simply, as you said, salting the intersections, and the mains, and the hills, and the curves. It's a, it's a different approach, it's a totally different approach than what we have done in the past, not to say that's wrong whatsoever. I think, in our opinion, we've always been into providing very high-level service, and we wanted all those streets running water, period. And to do that, you're at 110, 120 tons per storm, but the next storm, you're plowing it all up, it's going all up on the parkway. So, now, we're in this crunch, and it's forcing us to look at things differently. So, sure, I, I think it does open the door for us to say, if this is acceptable, should we approach things differently and conserve salt in the future?
Any other questions?
Didn't we have, last spring, something reminds me of, of the fact that we went out and bought some surplus salt that some other communities had left over, sort of what Palmer was talking about?
We, we went ahead and, to, to use the term "fill the cupboards," yes, we did. We didn't buy it from other communities, but we bought it from Morton Salt up in Milwaukee, and they honored the same price that we were paying through the state bid process. So, that salt was purchased mid to late fall, actually, and filled everything up, so, yes.
So, that was a nice little piece of arbitrage.
And that was something that we, we brought to you at your March meeting, March 18th meeting last year, and asked you permission to do so, if we could secure the same cost per ton. So, yes, I agree, it was, it was a, a smart move.
If we hadn't done that, where would we be now?
We would have been talking a whole lot sooner, because we would have been very far down in salt, so that's, but doing that again, we know, and we're going to be going through the same calculation over the next 30 days, we've got to put our numbers together to make sure, next winter, we have 3,600 tons. It doesn't matter if it's through the state, through the county, we go buy it in the summer, however, it adds up, we, I want to make sure we've got 3,600 that we can buy and have here throughout the winter, so.
So, Michael, just so we're clear, what you're recommending and asking the city council this evening is approval to purchase the 500 tons from the Holicky Brothers, and then to authorize Public Works and Finance Committee Chairman to approve possibly others, and in that case, those would come back eventually to the city council for ratification, but as Michael indicated, when you get the order, you've got to move pretty quickly on it.
That is correct, and to give some reference, Vernon Hills, I believe, reached, recently purchased salt at 175 a ton, they sent and hired trucks to drive out to Iowa. I believe, Bob, you sent us an email, it was at Homewood, Illinois, that bought it from somewhere in Canada for 200 a ton. So, these, the pricing, although it is very high, the reason it is high is that there are, there is salt available, but it's not in the Midwest, and it's not in the East Coast. It's down south, and it's a little bit out west, and you've got to, you've got to bring it in, so, but yes.
And just checking the numbers, right now, we have half, well, 500 tons?
600, we have 600 on hand in our two salt bays, and we are, we have ordered our 20% overage that we are allowed to order through the state bid process, so that's 240 tons, assuming that comes through over the next couple of weeks, 800, 840 tons, and we're asking for an additional 500.
So, you know, seemingly, we'd be covered, even though it's an extraordinary winter, we should have some surplus going into next year.
I, I would hope so, and especially, we will continue the practice of conserving the salt, and we're going to continue the practice of plowing the streets, even though it might be a blue sky out. We've got to continue to scrape those side streets as well, so, yes.
Okay.
And again, the biggest concern is March. When, when we've got all that snow that's going to melt, you could potentially have freezing rain, you're going to have freezing temperatures in the overnight hour, the black ice, and when we have black ice, all bets are off, the whole town will be salted, it's not just hills, curves, and intersections, everything will be salted. So, that is what that 500 tons is for. It's not for the 10-inch snowstorm in February, it's, it's truly for those black ice conditions that I'm, that I'm most concerned about.
And as I said, the snow on the ground is going to eventually melt, and as it melts, it's going to be on our roads, so, you know, we have to take care. And putting off ordering, obviously, it's a high market right now, God only knows it'll be in a week, as we discussed today. We're gambling at that point, it could go higher, it could go lower.
Correct.
We don't want to get caught short.
Correct, and you're right, things may change, but we've continued to call multiple times throughout the week, for the past three weeks, and this seems to be it, meaning that there's no supply that, some unknown supply that's up in Madison. They know where the supply is, they simply are asking themselves, should they, as a company, spend the money to truck that material in? Do they have enough buyers that are going to pay that price? And right now, they're not doing that, they're saying, we're going to pick it up in the location and bring it directly to you. We're not going to take this whole pile that's out in Ogden, Utah, and transport it to Aurora, and then hope we sell it. That's not the way they're running it. They're saying, we're going to find people that are interested, and we'll direct ship from the pile to their location, so.
And just one other point, because we're killing time to a certain degree, finding the sources of salt right now, it's not one of the easier things to find someone who actually has salt available on the market, even at the inflated prices, it's kind of a miss. And I did have a conversation with, as I described this afternoon, the city attorney for Morton Grove, and they had no sources, they were blind calling, just trying to find 50, 100 tons, anything at this point, so you're finding an available source is truly a lucky streak right now.
Yeah. I'm not going to tell you where I, this, this one we just came upon, we were very lucky to find it.
Don't give your source away.
Okay.
Yeah.
I won't, I won't.
Point made. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Next are other matters, do we have other matters? Is there anything we can take from the, the main agenda, and do that in the 10 minutes we have remaining? Unity Spotlight, maybe?
I just have one, only because he just showed up. Jack Meyerhoff, who was supposed to be at our last council meeting, is here tonight. Do you want to talk about your Rotary form? I assume that's why you're here.
I am, I am.
Two weeks, two weeks late. You can tell you, you retired.
I am, I am. I am Jack Meyerhoff, I, I'm retired, and I'm a member of the, past president, a member of the Rotary here in Lake Forest. Brief comment about Rotary, Rotary as a group, I think it's mostly fraternal, but we do a lot of social service work with donations and such. We have 70, 80 business people, I would say half are retired and half are not. Bob Kylie is kind of in the middle, he's one of our Rotarians, so, but the reason I'm here is to promote a... But the reason I'm here is to promote a, an event we're going to sponsor here at the Lake Forest Club on March 5th. It's an economic breakfast, and with this money that we raise, and hopefully, we can incent some of you to join us, if they can see that, yes. We generate funds from these breakfasts. We have 200 to 300 people. Do two or three of these a year, and monies from that, we donate to the local communities. And over the last 10 years, we've donated a million dollars, which 50% are in town and 50% are out of town, which I think is pretty impressive, within five miles of here, to donate $500,000 or $50,000 a year. So from these programs, that program, we generate monies, and that goes back into the communities that we all serve. And what's interesting and why I'm here is about the fiscal state of Illinois, fitness or folly, and we're having three premier speakers. And those speakers will give a pretty comprehensive overview of the state of Illinois and how that ties into all the municipalities, which really affects me, us, you, and hopefully, from that, maybe we can get a table or two. And anybody else that's watching the meeting here tonight or on TV would have an interest. So again, a recap here, it's on March, I gotta look, March 5th at 7:15 in the morning. So it doesn't goof up your day too much, and hopefully, I can get some of you to attend, and anybody else that's listening. So Bob, Mr. Mayor?
The only thing I would add is the city does have one table right now, so if anybody is interested and would like to attend, please let Shelley Walker know in my office.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Any other matters? If not, there's an opportunity for public comment. Is there any member of the public who'd like to comment? That's all we have. Mr. Mayor, before I adjourn, when are we going to start again?
Why don't we start right on time, Mr. Chairman, at 7:30?
All right. I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1674.99]